I'd like to call to order the July thirteenth meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Could we have the roll, please?
Okay, from my top to bottom, I'll start with Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
And Commissioner Tauber.
Present.
And for the record, Chair Wagstaff and Budget Councillor are not attending the meeting tonight.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on any matters that are not on today's agenda?
Yeah, if anybody has to speak, please push the raise hand button.
Yes. Do you see there are five attendees?
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, then we will move to the Planning Director's report.
Okay, a few things to report, a couple items in case. For anyone in the public and for certainly for the commissioners as well. You may be aware, Bonner Bridge is currently closed this week. They're doing some major to vehicles, that is, they're moving some girders and they've had to close down the roadway. That's for this week only. I believe that's the last time the road should be closed entirely. It is currently allowing controlled bicycle and pedestrian traffic over the bridge. I may have mentioned this, the city has opened the lobby in City Hall. The Planning and Building Department is holding hours, counter-hours on Monday and Wednesday mornings from nine to noon. We have the Building Inspector available to answer questions and help with code questions for one hour on Mondays, nine to ten, and Wednesdays, nine to ten. We anticipate having more hours in the future, as long as, you know, COVID protocols remain on a positive trend. But also needing to improve our staffing levels to support that. So as we, both in Building and Planning Department, so we're working on that. The library is holding open hours on Tuesday afternoons and evening and Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. I had sent out an email and it is up on our website, the County of Marin will be holding a workshop on a model reusable foodware ordinance. It's a ordinance kind of like the plastic bag ban that came into place several years ago. It's an ordinance to discourage use of plastic plastics in to-go foods and to-go containers. And particularly plastics as a means of onsite eating. Some places will give you throwaway plastic utensils and forks and cups and straws and things like that. So it's ordinance that is intended to replace that type of, whether it's to-go or onsite foodware with sustainable materials. So they're going to be holding a public workshop tomorrow night from six to seven thirty. It's the link to that is on our website and certainly on the county's website. That model ordinance will be the template for ordinances that would have to be adopted by other cities and agencies in order to create a sort of consistent countywide approach to both monitoring and enforcing that kind of foodware ordinance. Essentially, it's the County of Marin that provides, has the Health Department inspectors that can enforce those types of regulations, but they need to make sure they're consistent throughout the county. So unless a city adopts a consistent type of foodware ordinance, it would have to enforce it itself. So that's where that particular foodware ordinance discussion is important, not just to the county and countywide agencies, but also the Larkspur. Should Larkspur seek to eventually adopt a, an ordinance along the same lines? Subsequent to the, certainly before any adoption of an ordinance, there will be a lot of public outreach, both with interested parties as well as restaurants and business communities of interest to work on, try to make the process and change transition as, as functional as possible for everyone involved. Also, the City Council will be holding a few items on their agenda next week. Dealing with or pertinent to the Climate Action Plan and our GHG reduction measures. One is going to be a second hearing on our draft Climate Action Plan. The staff has incorporated several comments from some parties of interest, so we've updated the Climate Action Plan as well as a group that would like to see a vision statement, and they've prepared a vision statement, looking at it, sort of envisioning Larkspur in ten years, what the Climate Action Plan may achieve. The council will be holding a workshop on that vision statement at their next meeting on the twenty-first. And the council will also be having an initial discussion on a possible climate emergency resolution. A number of cities throughout the throughout California as well, but throughout the community in Marin have adopted various forms of climate emergency resolutions, and one of the primary purposes of the Climate Emergency Resolution is to assure that the City Council and and other boards and committees are taking into consideration some of the goals and actions of the Climate Action Plan in, in decisions that occur particularly relative to budget and programs as well as any discretionary decisions. Now, the Planning Commission, we do CECL overview and, and we adopt codes that are very specific to climate addressing GHG reduction. And so a lot of our issues with the Climate Action Plan will have to do with code updates and things which would eventually be reflected in project approvals and conditions of approval. So it's the other aspects of the Climate Action Plan that Climate Emergency Resolution would apply to also policy programs and other such activities engaged by the city. Even the capital improvement program, things like that, as being more recognition of GHG reduction goals. So that's going to be a discussion they're going to have on next Wednesday night. And finally, last Friday night, last Friday was the appeal deadline for RENA to ABAG for the ABAG distribution of arena allocation throughout the Bay Area. And it's the opportunity under state law and the ABAG guidelines to appeal the, the Reno allocation for local jurisdictions. And Larkspur did, we did submit an appeal on behalf of Larkspur requesting a reduction of about two hundred and fifty units. Largely cited the significant amount of both Bluey and High Fire Hazard Area in and around our neighborhoods and then around the areas that are identified as high opportunity areas and as well as our transit priority area that are part of what is driving the, the high numbers for Larkspur. We also identified the amount of flood zone and potential sea level rise within those areas as being a factor. That said, the guidance, the state law and the guidance by ABAG for appealing, they do establish some pretty narrow parameters and certainly present a challenge for agencies attempting to appeal the decision. In addition, certainly the process of appealing both given the sort of opaque nature of how the numbers are derived, as well as the process of going through the ABAG forms and processes, very cumbersome. So it certainly was, has been a challenge to present that appeal and all many communities throughout the Bay Area, we anticipate a number of communities throughout the Bay Area will also be appealing. And just about all the communities in Marin are appealing. Except for Novato and San Rafael. And I think the final point on that is regardless of what any individual agency or jurisdiction has to say, or in terms of requesting reductions in their arena numbers. The, the overall distribution of arenas based on a very large number that was applied from the state to the nine Bay Area County region and reducing any agency's numbers does not take that out of the whole overall mix. So ultimately, if one agency gets reduced here, it has to be accounted for or increased in other agencies. So the, it's a bit of a zero-sum game. We question, we're doubtful whether or not this will really create any difference for Larkspur Marin County. But given the number of agencies that are appealing, there, there may be interest in sort of, you know, making that statement day back that we certainly have concerns already about the number that we have. But it's, this is all very new territory, I think, for both the area, the region and our agencies and our interactions with ABAG as, as our council governments. So we'll know within a few weeks, there'll be a hearing process for all the agencies and we'll kind of get a better idea of how that's going to work. But I'm, would have to say I'm fairly dubious whether it's going to make a change, but we're, we have made that, taken that action and that's been some of our efforts of the last couple of weeks. So with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions? I am seeing none. So I think we will move on to our public hearing item, which is Heritage Review, Heritage Rehabilitation Permit Design Review, Floor Area Ratio Exception twenty-one dash eighteen for sixty-eight Madrone Avenue. Kristin, could we have the report, please, staff report?
Since I, I think I covered all the issues pretty well on the staff report, I'm going to just sort of touch on the primary things here tonight. If you have any questions, then you can certainly follow up. Applicants requesting permits that would allow a two-story addition at the rear of an existing historic single-family home totaling about five hundred and twenty-seven square feet. The modifications also include sort of tearing apart and expanding an existing historic east-facing dormer on the home. The new additions would add a ground floor, family room, and a second-floor master suite above. The east-facing dormer modifications proposed to add square footage back into a, an existing bedroom that's lost to tie the new additions into the second floor. The historic architect has reviewed this project several times. Initially, she asked for some modification to the east-facing dormer proposal, and they did that modification. And when it was presented to the Historic Board on May twenty-seventh, the applicant also included the dormer study, which I have an electronic copy here, you can kind of see, this is what was presented to the Heritage Board. That gave them three options. The top one was the option the historic architect approved, and that has the new dormer expansion step back behind the original form. So that, in the historic architect's opinion, the original design reads better from the public right-of-ways in areas where people can really see the home. The other two options were just options to try and that the architect felt worked better for what they were trying to achieve in terms of the expansion of the home. And he's here tonight, so I'm sure they can explain, they can cover that themselves. The Heritage Board recommended approval of this project. They believe it's really necessary to allow some modification to these homes in order to preserve the historic home at the same time, let people reinvest in them. And they actually accepted dormer option number three as the, as part of their recommendation. And that option is now depicted in the plans before you tonight that were presented to you in your packets. So you can see here that the dormer is expanded quite a bit in, to the rear in order to provide that space back to the bedroom. Generally, staff has proposed or provided you with a, with a lot of reasons for support, and these homes do deserve some reconsideration in order to allow the property owner to invest and retain their historic character and character-defining features. The only two issues that were raised in the report was first the modification of the east-facing dormer contrary to the historic architect's recommendation. It was noted in the report that the Heritage Board was unfamiliar with the four-square style architecture and expressed that opinion in, in their discussion, and we're a little confused as to really what difference it made to expand the, and modify the dormer or retain it. So I did ask the historic architect to provide you with a letter that better explained the four-square style of architecture, and that was included in your report just for your consideration when you go through the issues. The second issue was the high FAR point five-three, which for a lot this size, which isn't that uncommon all over Larkspur. It far exceeds what would normally be supported. And it also is pretty well over what any other home along the Madrone Avenue quarter in this area has as well. Anything that high is pretty unusual. The homes on Onyx, which were included in the survey, are all old enough that they were considered for inclusion in the historic inventory. They long predate the the current standards that we're working from today that were adopted starting in the sixties and have continuously progressed. So in conclusion, although we do have some concerns, we have provided you with findings for approval and conditions of approval for your consideration. The applicant or the commission can approve it as proposed, approve it with modifications imposed as conditions, or continue the application and ask for revisions. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Kristin before we open it up?
Kristin, I just had a question just historically, because I saw two things and I read in Larkspur past and present. The history of the house is, I'm a little confused by when it was built, because there seems to be a twenty-year difference between when historically from the record, it seems it was built, and from what the architect says when it was built. So do you know much more about that?
I am a little perplexed by it myself. The earlier date comes from the county assessor, so something existed there in the late eighteen hundreds. But the architect, when they evaluated the home and looked at all the history, determined that that particular form and building likely was built in nineteen twenty.
I mean, I'm going to guess that there was probably like, just like, like, we used to own a house in the back of Madrone Canyon, and the original house was a cabin that was constructed there, and then they built around it like an onion. But probably that, because, because the prairie box construction style, I was reading, it's fascinating, I was reading about it today. It was really nineteen twenties, and my grandmother actually built a house in Morgantown, West Virginia, almost identical to this. Around nineteen twenty-one.
That would be my best guess, is that things just changed, and that style of architecture, as you said, came around at the estimated date that the historic architect provided.
Yeah. Great, great.
And actually.
I haven't, oh, go ahead. No, Nora, go ahead. Unrelated question, so you should go first.
Well, this is sort of unrelated, but it is a history question. The other thing it talked about was that the entryway to the house was originally out onto Onyx. And when I went to the site and walked around, you know, there's a whole other house presumably. So, so I'm assuming this house once upon a time had the whole, like, the space in front of it that's at the corner, Onyx and Madrone.
That's what I would, would understand from the description. They believe the entry was once facing Onyx and then you know, a lot of these properties in the Madrone Canyon were subdivided and re-subdivided in the days when you could deed land around. So that's not unusual. We have some pretty odd configured lots that were created by deed.
I think that porch went all the way around.
Well, I don't think.
The entrance.
I don't think it wrapped around the Madrone side, but you can see that it wrapped around the back. So.
And then, yeah, I think when you access it, what's now number one Onyx. I think you probably could have just originally, that wasn't there, and maybe you could have just walked through to get to the front door. That's how I assumed the house would have originally looked like.
Well, remember that this was over here all porch at one point. I processed the application in two thousand and seven that allowed the expansion into that porch.
Yeah, and I just kind of assumed, reading the description, that then the entryway came off of that porch out to Onyx.
Right.
And that's why they were called, you know, four squares, because they were literally, they were squares with, you know, four dormers and hip roofs on them. You know, very symmetrical, kind of a salt box type look to them.
Yeah, this home has gone through some modification over the years, as you can see. And this is another step in its history here.
Part of the reason, I guess, I was interested in the Onyx entryway was because when this house was built, it had a lot more land around it than it has today, which is why it, the FAR even becomes an issue.
Yeah.
I think. So, okay. Any other questions for Kristin and before we ask the applicant to present?
You know, I, I have a question, but I think maybe it's better answered by the architect, but I'll, I'll put it out there, because I was looking at the three options that were presented to the Heritage Board. And I just wanted to clarify, the option one, which is the one that was originally recommended by the historic architect. Does that avoid removal of the existing dormer? Or it still has to be modified?
I'm sure Jared could better talk about it, but my understanding is it results in less modification from the original demo plan I had.
Okay, so it still gets modified. It's not that it, it's just a smaller modification, right? Okay.
Hey, that's probably a good point to ask Jared Polski if he would like to present the project. And I think what you need to do.
Kathleen Heimerman is here tonight.
Okay, whoever would like to present the project.
Jared, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Well, yeah.
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, you have the mic.
Okay, thanks a lot. Well, good evening. My name is Jared Polsky. I'm here, sort of here, I guess, with Kathleen and my project architect and my clients Ari and Mead Bloom. First off, I want to thank Kristin for her very well-detailed report. As she explained, we went through the historical review process just a short while ago. It seemed that Jerry Hulan's only main concern was the design and the shape of the dormer at the northeast corner. And as Kristin said, we presented three versions of the dormer, as you've seen. One as suggested by Ms. Hulan and the two others. We're going to keep the, the left dormer intact, and our feeling was it was much more it flowed much better to have one, one clean dormer than one, an existing dormer and then a slot and then a little dormer. And, and, but we were open to all three configurations, and we asked the Historic Board what they liked, and they all suggested that the number three, the one that we actually like better, is the cleanest, simplest way. And what it does, it just sort of adds to the existing dormer, rather than choppy slots between two dormers. But we're open to any one of the three. And staff, as Kristin noted, the addition to the house fits pretty well with the existing house. We used all the mass reduction techniques that architects use. It seems like a seamless hole to us. The, the house will not be perceived as a huge house. The house itself is just over twenty-two hundred square feet. And frankly, it's designed to meet the needs of modern families. It has all the spaces that almost all of my clients ask for, and it's without being a huge house. In my opinion, probably one of the most important aspects of this design, however, is how it's been received by the neighbors. To my knowledge, all of the surrounding neighbors have seen the story polls and all of them have written letters of support. And while it's true that we're asking for a floor area ratio exception, this house will not have the highest FAR in the area as, as shown on Kristin's chart. And in fact, the staff shows, the chart the staff shows is five other houses with higher FARs. But frankly, floor area ratio is not some magic number. It's supposed to be a rough guide to control mass and bulk. And this house counts two hundred and sixteen square feet of the garage in its FAR, over four point six percent of the FAR from the largely underground garage. And some of the other nearby houses on Madrone don't even have garages, so just that one fact alone adds four and a half, over four and a half percent to, and provides a garage. And the additions, as proposed, are hardly visible from a drone. This project will not give the impression of a massive structure. So we're asking today, you know, I see that we're all asking more from our dwellings than ever before. Many of us are working from home still, and I don't think we're all going to go back to work. We're all going to be hybrid schemes, or not, most of us will be, after the pandemic fades away. I think it's a trend, and more residents will want slightly larger homes for this changing lifestyle. And in my opinion, these future houses and remodels, if they're well-designed and accepted by the neighbors, the, if the exceptions for FAR should be really considered acceptable. And I hope you agree with me and support our project. I don't think it's going to present as a massive house. We're, Kathleen and I are here to answer any questions, and Ari and Mead are here, and they would like to say a few words after my, my speech. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Jared? Okay, seeing none. Okay, I see Ari with a hand up.
I have to ask you, unmute. There we go.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, and we really appreciate your consideration today. I don't think our video is on Kristin, but that's fine. My wife, Mead, and I are here and really appreciate you taking the time today. Just a brief history of our intent with this remodel and our history with the home. I grew up here in Marin County.
Yeah, do a video.
No problem. And, and Mead and I purchased the house in two thousand and eight. In large part due to its historic nature, my, my grandmother actually grew up in San Francisco and was born in nineteen eleven and would tell me stories of coming prior to the construction of the Golden Gate Bridge on the ferry over to Larkspur to dance. So when Mead and I were looking for a house in two thousand and eight, we just had our first child, you know, this house really spoke to us in, in large part because of its historic nature, and it's been really a great house to live in for us for, for thirteen years. You know, our, our kids are getting older and the house, you know, for them, that it will, it will be very helpful to have the additional bedroom so that our two, our two sons, one of whom is just becoming a teenager at thirteen, can, can each have their own room, and that's our intent here. So we, when we looked at the design, we really wanted to put it in the back in large part to preserve the historic nature of the Madrone-facing view and because prior work had been done in that back area, so it seemed to make the most sense. And as we spoke with our neighbors, it was also, you know, what seemed to be the best from their points of view. So we're really appreciative, as Jared said, of, of their support. And other than that, you know, knowing that, you know, the dormer does seem to be an open question. You know, we, we said to the Heritage Board and as well to this group that, you know, in the end, we'll accept whatever you guys feel best about. You know, our preference is to, is to have the dormer in, you know, option three, the way that the Heritage Board proposed, because we think it makes that second room work best. But again, you know, we're, we're open and willing to work with you guys as needed, so happy to answer any questions and thank you again for your, your time and your support.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this? You could raise your hand.
I don't see any hands raised.
Yeah, I don't see any more hands raised either. Okay. Then I will bring it back to the commissioners for comments. And I will go with Commissioner Thomas first.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm going through the four points then that they've asked for. I start with the easiest one. I can, I can, looking at this and reviewing it, and I did go down to the property and have a look. I, I do think it's a beautiful property. I want to start by saying I can make the findings for the heritage rehab permit. I think, given the front slope and the impact that adding spaces would have on this historic aesthetic, I, I don't think we should be requiring conformance with the on-stop, the onsite parking requirements. With regards to the heritage permit, I think this is a bit more of a complicated issue. On one hand, this was reviewed by the heritage board, and they made their recommendation. They picked option three. From my personal perspective, you know, I'm not a trained architect, so when I looked at the three designs, I, I found them all quite similar. And I did learn tonight that they're all going to be modifying that side dormer, which was in question anyway. I actually think option three is probably the most attractive, and it seems to make the most sense. And it is on the side of the property, which is obscured from the street. So that's on one hand. On the other hand, though, I do hear and, you know, see in the notes that the historic architect clearly stated that, that the option recommended by the board, option three, doesn't conform with guideline nine of the historic standards. And I saw why it sort of obscures the symmetry, and it alters an original historic feature. So I, you know, I wasn't at the board meetings, I'm not sure quite what was going on, and whether there was some kind of misunderstanding or how they got to that point, but I, I do see kind of both sides. I have to say, I'm kind of leaning on going with the recommendation of the board, but I do want to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say on that, too. And in regards to design review and FAR, I think that the addition is compatible with the neighborhood. I think it's attractive, and it's appropriately designed for this particular property, and it's mostly hidden from the street. So find this design review on the FAR. I hear what staff is saying about avoiding setting a precedent. You know, I read in the, I read in the report about setting the precedent over the point-five threshold. But I'm again inclined to approve this FAR exception as specifically because this property is a historic designation, and they have to deal with the slope at the front. So it is a sort of a unique property that you, we can approve this for. So yeah, those are my comments, and I'd like to hear from the, from the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Swisher.
Well, I largely agree with Commissioner Chalmers on this. I think that, let's start with, again, with the parking issue. I think that's a no-brainer. It would be a travesty to try to put four parking spaces on this property. It just would not work. The fact that you already have a garage, and you have a space is great. Again, having lived on Madrone before our current house, I know parking's a problem there, but it, it is what it is. It's, you know, it's Larkspur. So I would agree that we could meet that, we could approve the, the waiver of that requirement. The, far as the dormer goes, I am in full agreement. I think option three is the most aesthetically pleasing of the three. And I think architecturally and probably from a construction standpoint, I think it would be problematic to try to put a gap in between those two dormers, and I think it would actually end up looking kind of funny. Almost like an afterthought, as opposed to a unified construction. And I think the whole point of that historic thing is to try to preserve in the integrity of the historic process while at the same time, you know, allowing for, you know, a modernization of the concept. And it, it still preserves a dormer, even though it's not the exact symmetrical dormer on the other side. So I'm in favor of option three. And as far as the FAR goes, I think a lo- a large part of the problem with FAR here is because it's a seventeen percent slope. And having had issues with a sloped house of my own, I understand why it's, it's frustrating to have to reduce your FAR because of slope, especially in Larkspur where there's a lot of slope. I don't think this is that big. I don't think it's a massing problem. And I think that, again, you're looking at the front of the house without actually ever even seeing the fact that you're building into the back. Fact that the neighbors don't object to it is just, again, aesthetically pleasing. I don't have any problem with an FAR of point five-one or five-three. I think with option three, it increases the FAR to point five-three, and I, and I'm completely fine with that. So I could make that finding as well. It's a really nice design, and, and I appreciate the fact that historical integrity is being preserved and modern, you know, families need space now that they didn't need back in nineteen twenty-one. And I think that this is a nice way to do it.
Thank you. The benefit of going last is you always get to piggyback on what your fellow commissioners have already said. To be brief, I think I, I think I'm not going to try to second-guess the heritage board. I, I think that they, they looked at this carefully, the historic architect looked at this carel- carefully. And I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with their recommendation, which means option three. And if they could see clear to approve the project and its impact on a historic property, I, I think I can live with that, too. So that, so that really means I'm okay with the design review. I think, I think where I had the biggest hiccup when I looked at the project, when I read through this, was really about the FAR and the concern about setting precedent, which I think is real. And so, you know, for me to think about this and, and, you know, can I, can it, can I sort of live with small how, a relatively small house on what is now a smaller lot, that, which is why I was asking about the, the old entryway and, and having more property. You know, I, I think really what's at hand here is a family's desire to have a more livable house and to have enough bedrooms for their family. And I don't know how you do it without having a high FAR. So I guess I can see my way clear to approve it. But they, sort of the notion that this is a special situation, it is a historic house on a, on a sloped lot, and we're, we're trying to make this a livable house. So. With that said, would, what have you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we vote on the, again, my parliamentary language is going to be not as but I, we make a motion on what we've been talking about. Finding, what are the find, Laura, help me out here.
Heritage review, heritage rehabilitation permit, design review, floor area ratio exception, number twenty-one eighteen sixty-eight Madrone Avenue.
That's why we have a lawyer here. That's fantastic. Excellent.
And this staff report.
Do you want to, shall I just make the motion then?
You could make the motion.
That was it. And then Jeffrey can, Jeff can second.
Can you second?
Yeah, second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that is three in favor, and there we have two absent commissioners. So for anyone who chooses to do so, there is a ten-day appeal period. But otherwise, congratulations on your approval of the project. So that was the only item that we had in the public hearing. We do have a business item to approve the minutes from June eighth, which was the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June eighth.
Will you second?
I can second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have approved the minutes with two absent commissioners. And the last item is if there are any planning commissioner reports. I am not hearing any. So we are done with the agenda items. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Natasha, your turn.
Oh, yeah, I can make an emotion to adjourn tonight's meeting, July eighth.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, hey, thank you, guys. And just so you know, there are a couple notices going out. We'll have a couple more items for you at our next meeting in two weeks.
All right.
All right.
Great.
And you'll be a lot busier next week, or next meeting.
Great.
And we'll have a different chair.
Yeah.